I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Board of Directors for Vallesitas Water District for Thursday, February 27. First we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and I'd like to ask Director Martin if you'd leave us in that please.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll do roll call by electronically and it looks like we're all here. I need a motion to adopt our agenda for the meeting.
Second.
Spend maybe in second to those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Our first item is public comment. Persons wishing to address the matter not on the agenda may be heard at this time, however, no action will be taken until the matter is placed on a future agenda in accordance with board policy. Public comments are limited to three minutes. A request to speak form is required to be submitted to the Executive Secretary prior to the start of the meeting if possible. Public comments should start by stating name, address, and topic, and the board is not permitted during this time to enter into a dialogue with you on the subject matter. And we have one speaker and that would be Michael Hunzaker.
Michael Hunzaker, speaking as President of the Twin Oaks Valley Property Owners Association. I have mentioned last time, the last meeting, the unfairness of charging three five-eighths inch meter homeowners the same rates as three-quarters inches. The original differential that was established on the basis that a three-quarters inch meter was to apply, was to comply with fire regulations. So that started out at a pretty good clip, I think about over seven dollars a month differential. And gradually, step by step, you have increased the burden on the small homeowner for fire service capacity that he does not get. And it appears to be your intention to nail the small homeowner for this nonexistent service. And it's also a concern about the detached attachment fees and your ability to sell the same capacity twice. Once to the guy who's never got any service, never paid for anything, and he just wants to go to a water district where he can get service. If you cannot provide service, I do not see how you can provide a bill for that service. Now, if people are coming in, there's capacity fees. But detachment fees, based on building something that's going to someone else, is not fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next thing we will do is we will go to our public hearing and we will open this. This is the time and place for a hearing to consider water service rate changes. General Manager Prum, will you please provide the details?
Sure will. Thank you, President Evans. Good evening, Board. So tonight's meeting is the public hearing to consider changes to the district's water rates and charges. This meeting is required by Proposition 218, which was passed by voters back in 1996, and it's now incorporated into the California Constitution as Articles 13(c) and d. Prop 218 requires that agencies proposing to increase water rates provide notification to their customers at least 45 days before the public hearing to consider those rates. The Vallesitos Board approved the Prop 218 notice at its hearing on Thursday, January 9th, and notices were mailed on Monday, January 13th, which satisfies the 45-day notification requirement. So in order for the rates to not become effective, there must be a majority protest by the Vallesitos customers. That's the requirements of Proposition 218. The protests must be in writing, and they must include the name and address of the protesting customer. Prior to the start of tonight's meeting, the district has received 57 official written protests, and that's well short of the more than 11,000 protests needed to satisfy the protest requirement. Of those 57 letters, 48 appeared to be some sort of a form letter that was distributed. The Board is being asked to adopt Ordinance 215 tonight, establishing the rates included in the notice that was sent to our customers. And those rates will become effective for usage as of March 1st of this year. The Board will be hearing a presentation from district staff and the district's professional rate consultant explaining the reasons for the increase, how the rates were established, and how the rates will affect our typical customers, amongst some other items. But before we get into that, I did want to provide, take a minute to provide a very brief overview of district finances and clarify what is being considered tonight and what is not being considered tonight. So the district does provide two primary services. We have water and we have wastewater. The finances for those two services are never combined and they're tracked in separate funds. Within each of those two funds, there are two sub-funds. One is a fund to operate, maintain, and replace the existing system, which is called our operating fund, and the other is a fund to use to construct new facilities to serve future development, and that's called our capacity fund. So just like our water and wastewater funds are never commingled, neither are our operating and capacity funds. So if we can, this is a slide to try to illustrate what I was talking about. On the left side, we have our water funds, which is comprised of operating funds and developer fees at the bottom, and on the right side is the wastewater fund for sewer, again, as operating on the top and capacity on the bottom. So the notice that went out in January was only for adjustments to the water rates. That's all it was. So we're going to take the wastewater off the topic. That's not a subject today at all. The wastewater rates that are in place right now will remain in place throughout, from here forth, until they're changed through some other process. And last year, the Board approved increases in the fees that we charge developers to pay for their fair share of the costs needed to pay for new infrastructure to service their increased demands on the system, and we call those capital facility fees. Those new capital facility fees went into effect on January 2nd of this year and addressed the capacity fund. So those are off the table too. Those are unquestioned today. So the only rates and charges that we are discussing tonight are those required to operate the existing water system. None of the funds from operating revenue, which is what rates fund, none of those funds are used to pay for system capacity expansion to support development. So before I turn the presentation over to staff, who's going to be doing a more detailed presentation, this may be a good opportunity to pause and see if the Board has any initial questions. If not, we'll turn it over to the Finance Manager. Okay, so with that, I'll turn it over to Wes Owen, our Finance Manager, and he'll go over some of the issues that were raised in the protest letters that we did receive, and he'll explain the primary drivers or reasons for proposed increases in our water rates. Wes?
Good evening, President Evans, members of the Board. It's my pleasure to present tonight at our public rate hearing. I'm excited because I get to present more like graphical and stuff tonight, less numbers, so it's pretty interesting. Okay, so I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach this year. Historically, we go through the rates and then we answer customer questions at the end. However, most of our customer questions were related to three specific topics. So I'm going to start by presenting those questions and then hopefully answer them through my presentation. So to answer them, I'm first going to give an explanation background on our reserve funds and how they work, then I'll go over a review of our capacity fees and our capacity fee model. I'll talk about our replacement reserves, then I'll talk about some of our rate drivers, and finally, I'll give my conclusions and hopefully answer all of the questions. After my presentation, I'll introduce Todd Cristiano, who's our independent consultant from Raftellis, and he'll give his presentation on our water rate study report. And then Mike will tell us about the impact of the proposed rate on the customers, as well as how we compare to other agencies. So to start, the first, well, the three questions we got were, do rates fund development? Are the district's reserve levels appropriate? And why do we need to raise rates? So let's look at these one at a time. So do rates fund development? As I mentioned, to do this, I'm going to go into an explanation of how our reserve funds work. The district has two reserve funds. We have a replacement reserve, and we have a capacity reserve. So what makes up the replacement reserve? Well, it's the beginning balance plus the operating transfers, which is the excess of revenues over expenses, and that is funded by rates, and those are used to pay for the replacement of existing facilities or infrastructure. And then you have your ending balance. For the capacity fund, that's made up of the beginning balance plus capacity fees from developers, and those fees are used to pay for growth or development projects, and then you have your ending balance. The important thing to note here, and the reason I put them separately, is because they are separate, they're tracked separately, and they're never combined. And rates, as you can see, do not go into the capacity fund. So how do we track them? How do we account for them? We actually have two separate models. We have a water rate model and we have a capacity fee model. So we're going to talk about the water rate model in a little bit, but for now, I'm going to start with the capacity fee and just do a review of what we've gone through this year. It's a recap, so hang with me, but... So this year, we finalized the cap fee study with the help of the Keys Group, who are independent financial consultants. We actually, the result of the cap fee study was that we raised the capacity fees rates, and those rates were deemed to be appropriate to cover not only the cost of development, but also the cost to pay down our existing shortfall. Those rates went into effect January 2nd, 2020. And in addition to that, as part of our cap fee model, we always, we plan to issue debt to fund development. And this debt plan is actually done in our annual budget and five-year planning. So the district currently plans to issue debt in fiscal year 2022 for major development projects that are upcoming, and we've also taken the appropriate steps to recover costs from existing projects, as well as future projects in this debt issuance. And finally, and I can't stress this enough, the capacity reserves are tracked separately, and they're never included in setting water rates. So the next question...
Before you go on, could I just ask you to re, I've forgotten how much we raised the rate, the capacity fees, the percentage or the amount? I don't recall.
So I'm going to, I'll refer to Mike on that one.
Hey, Mike, and if you could provide the dollar amount and the percentage?
It'll take me about three minutes.
Thank you.
You want me to pause while he does that?
I was hoping you'd have a good joke or something.
Dance routine? I could do a dance, maybe. You don't want to see me dance.
No, we'll watch you dance. That's okay. Can all of you hear our speakers? When he's speaking, can you hear and understand him? Okay.
I think you should move forward.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So we'll come back to the percentage increase and I'll continue.
He's a little soft, except...
You speak...
Let me move Chucky out of the way so I can get up here on the microphone.
Yes.
How's that better?
Oh, that is better. And for me, would you just slow it a little bit? Not a lot.
Absolutely. I get excited. I'll slow down.
I know you're very excited, but we want to understand it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So back to our questions. Mike's going to get the answer to that question in just a minute, and until he does, I'll continue on and we'll come back to it, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay. So the second question, are the district's reserve levels appropriate? So to look at that, we have to look at the district's reserve policy. The district established a reserve policy that's, was established using industry best practices. It's been approved by the Board, and it establishes guidelines for prudent reserve levels, which includes a minimum and a maximum, or a floor and a ceiling. That we use that policy to plan for the future with a long-term goal of fiscal sustainability. And we, it's also used to provide stable rates for our customers. And this reserve policy is evaluated annually, and it's incorporated into our annual budget and our five-year long-range planning. So now we're going to take a look at how that's actually included in our budget and our five-year plan. So to do that, I'm going to present the long-range plan from the budget, but not in numerical format. I'll show you in graphs, so it's a little easier to see. So this graph here shows the reserve minimum or floor, and that floor is set per the reserve policy at three years of planned replacement of existing infrastructure. For example, in 2019, the reserve minimum or floor was $13 million, and we have the projection going out to 2024 per our five-year plan. This next slide shows the reserve maximum or ceiling, and that maximum is set at 10 years of replacement of existing infrastructure. And another example in 2019 is that would be $38 million for a maximum reserve level. So this graph shows the floor and the ceiling, or minimum and maximum together, and now we'll look at how the district's budgeted reserves are, show in this graph.
Could I just clarify then?
Yep.
So our low reserve is to maintain a balance that should take care of replacement necessities for three years.
Correct.
And our high is enough money in reserves to take care of, not capacity replacement and maintenance replacement.
Replacement.
Replacement for 10 years.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So and as we can see here, we have 2017 and 2018 actuels. They were around the ceiling, but they didn't exceed the ceiling. And in 2019, reserve levels were 34 million, which were kind of close to the ceiling of $38 million. However, in the next two years to 2021, they're projected to decrease down to $24 million. That's a result of replacing existing infrastructure and paying down high-cost liabilities. So in 2021, we're going to be around $24 million, which is getting pretty close to the floor. However, in 2024, they do recover, they get about halfway between the ceiling and the floor, but they're still well below the ceiling and within policy limits.
I got a question.
Yes.
So Wes, just for everybody's information, you're essentially the head of our Finance Department for the district, right? Who was the head before you?
That would be Tom Scaglione.
Okay. Is it, is it common for water agencies and other utilities and even cities to have some sort of reserve policy?
Yes, absolutely.
As a finance expert, would you say that it's prudent to have solid reserves?
Yes, it is.
Why would we want to have solid reserves? What are some examples?
So first of all, there are industry best practices to set reserve for prudent financial planning for the future, to lessen the burden on the rate payer. So if you run into emergency repairs, stuff like that, you can plan for it in the future and you can smooth out that impact to the customers. Almost every agency that's financially responsible has a reserve policy, and they're typically all the same, but they're based on the amount of assets that they have. So we have approximately $280 million in assets. As those assets age, we need to replace them, so we got to plan for that. We can't not have a reserve policy or set limits on the amount of money that we control. Not only that, but it also sets, as you can see, the maximum. We don't want to have too many reserves, so we have that maximum level.
So we have a policy. We have a floor and we have a ceiling, and we try to manage our reserves somewhere within those parameters.
Correct.
And that's sound economics from a, from a utility standpoint?
Yes.
Have the reserve, has the reserve policy, to your knowledge, changed significantly in between the time that the prior head of our finances was on duty versus you?
No.
Has there been any change at all?
No.
Okay. So this is a new?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Director Hernandez.
And don't I understand that based on the reserves, doesn't that participate in how our rating is for future debt?
Absolutely. Yes. And typically, they like to see it somewhere around the 70th, 75th percentile, which they would consider, and this is based on Fitch Ratings, they'd consider that to be strong reserves.
And our rating today is?
Our rating today is a double A+.
Double A+. So that means we're going, I don't know if it, is there a double A++?
Oh, there's a triple A after the double A+.
Oh, triple A. Yeah. Okay. So that would mean we'd be getting almost the very best interest rate when we go out for funding.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So Mike has the numbers, if you'd like to hear the results of the increase in capacity fees.
All right, thank you.
So on January 2nd, as Finance Manager Wes mentioned, we did do the new rates, and for water, the old rate was 77.56. It went up to 78.96. That's an increase of $140, just 1.8%. That's for the water capacity fees. The sewer capacity fees were at $9,963. They are now at $12,986. That's an increase of $3,023, or 30.3%.
And just to clarify, that's an increase that, for the developers, not for anybody that's sitting in this audience unless they're a developer?
That is correct.
Okay. So combined, in the 30% range?
Combined overall, because of the weightedness, it was about 18% overall. A $3,163 combined increase. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, so just to recap, reserves are well below the ceiling, but they're within policy limits. Okay, so the next question is, why do we need to raise rates? Hopefully, this is the most important to people here. We need to rate increase, raise rates for two major reasons, or two major factors that drive rate increases. The first one is increasing costs of purchasing water. We purchase the majority of our water from the San Diego County Water Authority, so if they raise their rates, we're not-for-profit, we have to pass that increase on to our customers. The next one is the rising cost of replacing infrastructure. I hit on that a little bit. As the district ages, we have to replace more and more, and it costs more for us. So let's take a look at the increasing cost of water purchases. This is an excerpt from page 10 of the approved 2020 budget. It shows the water operating expense budget, and the total is $44.3 million. This plus the cost of replacing existing infrastructure establishes our rate requirement, which is the amount that we have to charge customers. And of the $44.3 million, $32.2 million is for water purchases. 73% of our costs are for water purchases. So if there's a rate increase in our water purchases, it has a major impact on our costs. So what happened this year to water purchases? Well, the Water Authority increased their rates by 4.3%. And dollars if we purchased the same amount of, same amount of water, that's $1.2 million increase in water purchases.
I'm sorry, say that again.
So if we purchased the same amount of water that we, as we did last year, it'd be $1.2 million increase to our water purchase cost.
The same amount? Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
And just for the audience, so they know, we get water from San Diego County Water Authority, they get water from Metropolitan, and so that water cost flows from Metropolitan to the Water Authority to us. And we don't get a 218. We just have to suck it up. Thank you.
Yes, Director Sennella.
Wes, can you just maybe articulate a little bit what goes into the water rate from our wholesaler, San Diego County Water Authority, and Met for that matter, and maybe explain where the water comes from? I don't know if this is coming later in the presentation, but either from the Pacific Ocean or the Colorado River, and how, you know, how far that is from us, and what that, what might trigger some of those, those increases that they pass on to us?
Well, as Director Hernandez mentioned, their costs from the Metropolitan Water Authority...
You need to just get closer.
Yep, sorry. Would actually trigger that. Our component of that, we actually have a commodity charge and we have a fixed charge from the Water Authority. That's kind of the basis of it, so when they raise their fixed costs or their commodity charge to us, those costs are passed direct. You know, as far as the details, Mike or possibly GM Prum could answer that better than I could, but...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to go into too much detail, but both of those organizations, the Water, the San Diego County Water Authority and Metropolitan are significantly larger agencies than Vallesitos. Vallesitos has about 100 employees, give or take, depending on the year. 101, 102, 99, depends. Roughly, is it safe to say that those two agencies have thousands of employees?
Yes.
Okay. Is it safe to say that, like most companies and most agencies, that those employees might get, you know, a small raise at the end of the year after working all year long? Maybe 2%, 3%, something like that?
I assume they have a salary schedule very similar to other agencies.
So if, if, if those agencies that have thousands of employees were to give their employees at the end of the year a 2% raise, where would they get that money from in order to fund that?
Well, it'd be their operating costs.
And that would be passed on to us?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So 4.3% rate increase from the Water Authority. So the next major factor is the rising cost of replacing infrastructure. So let's take a look at the, the costs of replacing it. So in 2019, we budgeted $4.1 million for water replacement projects. In 2020, that amount increased to $5.4 million. That's an increase of $1.3 million for the cost of replacing infrastructure, change from last year to this year. That's a 32% increase. So as you can see, our costs are rising for replacing infrastructure as well. So we've covered the two major factors for rate drivers. So in conclusion, do rates fund development? The answer is no. Growth pays for growth through our capacity fee model. Are reserve levels appropriate? Yes, reserves are well within policy limits and well below the ceiling. Why do we need to raise rates? Well, we need to raise rates because the Water Authority increased their rates by 4.3% and our cost of replacing infrastructure increased by $1.3 million. However, through sound financial policy, we've been able to minimize the impact to the customers and only increase our revenue requirement by 3.5%. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll introduce our independent consultant, Todd Cristiano, to give a presentation on the water rate study report.
It's on, no, is that, that is on, okay. I normally only have an outside voice, at least that's what my wife tells me, so hopefully everyone can hear me okay. My name's Todd Cristiano, I'm with Raftellis Financial Consultants. We are the consultant, the district retained, to assist and update the cost of service model and the rates you'll, you'll see today. I have a few kind of summary slides of, of the process we went through, and I'll just walk through those and take questions as we go along. The study goals overall, obviously, develop rates that recover the fiscal year 20 revenue requirement based on the adopted budget, and ensure that those rates meet Prop 218 and those sick requirements that are stated in the Constitution. Study involved taking the existing model and updating it with all the data and the budget information and going through the process that's promulgated by American Water Works Association M1 Manual, which is the Principles of Water Rates, Charges, and Fees. It's the go-to manual in terms of looking at the requirements for rate setting. And at the end of the day, was to have that rate model design, design rates that would recover the cost to provide service to the customer classes for the district. I'll say that this was a collaborative effort. This was not something where the consulting gets information, runs away, and does a bunch of calculations, and comes back. It was a really collaborative effort between Glenn, Mike, and Wes, myself, so we really all rolled our sleeves up and got into the details there and tried to turn over every stone we could as we went through that process. Again, the revenue requirement, or that's the revenue required from rates, what rates need to recover for the district, is based on the district's 2000, fiscal year 2020 budget. As Wes had mentioned, it only recovers operations and maintenance expense and capital reserve requirements. So stated differently, it excludes growth-related costs, debt service, and those growth-related capital costs. Another big assumption that we have in the model is projecting water sales, and we had exhaustive information on that. And to project the fiscal year 20 revenue requirement, we have to look at the amount of water sales, how are customers using water, number of customers by meter size and all that. We used fiscal year 19 data and adjusted for use per account for projecting into fiscal year 20. The cost allocation part, or that's the component of, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm going to just go back for one second.
Sure.
I am so sorry. If you would go back, oh, great. When we say that, you say that you projected the water sales based on the financial year 19 actual demands. What does that exactly mean?
Well, we know that there's growth within the system, and we know that there might be some changes in use per account, you might be seeing some trends in use per account that might be different than fiscal year 19. So we're kind of projecting or getting our crystal ball out in terms of, well, what's the water usage going to look like in fiscal year 20? And we use a lot of historical data, we used fiscal year 19, looked at the consumption, the number of counts, and projected, how many new accounts might we have? Is the use per account going to change in fiscal year 20 for some reason? And those sorts of things. So we use fiscal year 19, and we adjust for growth and any sort of changes that we anticipate might be happening on a, on a customer basis.
I guess what I'm seeking to clarify is that you actually use each of our accounts and what they actually did to find out what, what was actually the demands for 19, and then you guesstimate based on... then you guesstimate based on other information where you think we'll go in 2020?
That's correct. We look at, we don't look at each individual line item, but we have the line item data and we slice and dice and aggregate and look at things at a very granular level. So we don't take a summary report of one line of it and say, we're gonna project off that. We do look at the granular level of, of data from the customer data that.
This is why we need Mike.
It was certainly helpful.
Okay, thank you.
So the cost allocation component, this is really where the M1 Manual comes into play with allocating costs based on the, how the system is operated, how a system is designed and then how customers use water and place demands on the system. We updated the supply unit cost as Wes had mentioned, that there's some increasing costs from the water suppliers. And we have different tiers of water supply and there's different costs and we've recognized that in the different tiers we have for the rate structure. And also important is the, the peaking factors. That's an important component of allocating costs between tier one, tier two and tier three. It's a mechanism we use to look at, there's facilities that, facilities within the system, pumping, storage, the treatment plants, and you don't have treatment plants here, but pumping, storage, distribution, that they all serve a different function. Some of them are designed and operate to meet maximum data demands or average day demands or peak hour demands. And using peaking factors from the 2018 master plan helps us allocate those costs to be recovered in tier one, tier two and tier three. So that's an important component. Those remained unchanged because the master plan document came out in 2018. We're still using those numbers as it was used in the previous rate study. The rate design, we're retaining obviously the existing schedule. We've not changed that at all. The tiers remain the same. The thresholds remain the same by meter size. That's not changed at all. We've retained the, the meter equivalency ratios, that ratio between what, the one-inch meter cost versus a three-quarter or five-eighth-inch meter cost. And at the end of the day, we slice and dice all these costs, allocate these costs to tiers, allocate costs to the ready-to-serve and we then develop the rates which then recover the fiscal year 20 revenue requirement or the adopted budget. A couple other findings here, you know, 3.5% is what was needed to meet the requirements that Wes had mentioned earlier. An important thing that is kind of forward-looking is that regular updates to your cost of service process models is important. Going six, seven years without updating it and then updating it, a lot of things can turn on its head. And because usage profiles have changed or there's been some significant investment that needs to be recovered and that sort of thing. So the, the district has been proactive in that, in that sense, in that you've done something in 2017 and here you are again in fiscal year 20, looking at that again. So you'll see that in the rates, there aren't any significant major swings, which is, which is good. You're, you're staying, you're being proactive and staying on top of that. And like I said, it didn't yield some incremental changes. Just a couple of bullets here that, you know, 90% of your customers have a one-inch meter size or less and they're gonna see an increase of $1.23 per month or less on the monthly ready-to-serve charge. The tier one and tier two variable cost charges, we're going up by 11 cents per, per unit and 15 cents per unit, which is less than the 3.5% overall increase. And consider that approximately 80% of the volume, which is probably about 85% of the customers' bills are in that first or second tier. So just to kind of put that in perspective with, with the overall increase and how it might impact the various, a majority of customers. Here's the rate table. I'm gonna turn it over to Mike unless there's any additional questions for me.
Are there any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Go to the next one?
I did, I did one.
All right, Director Hernandez.
I want to clarify, when you said growth, what jumps into my mind is additional homes being built. Is that homes being built or is that the volume of water growth?
Could be both.
Could be both.
Because they're now, they're, they've paid their capacity fees and now they're existing ratepayers. So new customers come on, they have additional demands. Overall, you have additional demands. The use per account might be the same.
Right. So, so the growth is the volume of water that's going to be needed to supply?
Correct.
Thank you.
And Director Sinella.
And it's, it's normal and probably prudent to try to forecast what kind of growth you might have. What, it could be residential growth, it could be commercial growth, but that's a pretty wise thing to do to try to figure out which direction we're going. If you were, if you were building classrooms, for example, and you were schooled, if we were on the school board, wouldn't we kind of want to do the same thing to say, how many classrooms am I gonna need five years from now, 10 years from now? And just like that, just like classrooms, how much water are we going to need? Or how much money are we gonna need to provide water five years from now, 10 years from now? Is that pretty normal?
It's, it's very normal and it's, it's, it's critical. You want, obviously, it's a, you know, it's a crystal ball, but you want to factor in as many things as you can that will give you a good picture of what the next year might look like.
Thank you. Great, thank you, Todd. Appreciate that. So Wes was saying he likes the charts and graphs. I love the numbers. And I really don't understand why everyone else doesn't love the numbers like I do. So what I want to do first though is stop for a second and gives you some definitions and notes, because sometimes I tend to just talk and say SFR and all these other acronyms. I just kind of want to give a brief definition. So when we say RTS, I might say RTS, that's a ready-to-serve charge. That's the monthly fixed charge that's on the customer's bill. A unit of water, is that one unit? Okay. A unit of water is 100 cubic feet or 748 gallons. If you guys all look at the pipes over there, if you were to encase that and fill it with water, that is about one unit of water. So to kind of give an idea, a lot of people, you know, you say a unit of water and it's like, what's that? So it's 748 gallons or 100 cubic feet. If I say SFR, we've said that a couple of times, it's single-family residence. And when I talk about an average SFR, that is your typical home with a 5/8-inch meter using 13 units of water a month. Then we'll talk about annual bills. So that's just the number of monthly bills that we send out times 12. And Director Evans, you kind of mentioned all the lines of data and if we look at them, and actually I arrowed through probably all of these and my whole thing is 250,000 lines of data, I used to say. It's now 270,000 lines of data and we do crunch all of those lines of data. So we send out...
I was just gonna ask you, how much was the data on number 2068?
I don't have that in. So for single-family, out of its 270,000 annual bills, about 204,000 of them are comprised of your average single-family resident. So roughly 75% of our customer base is a single-family home with a 5/8-inch meter. So when I do my rate comparisons, we're gonna focus mainly on that. And quickly, Todd mentioned tiers. So the tiers, we do have three tiers in place and they're charged based on your consumption and the rates increase progressively from one tier to the next. And the tiers also help to promote conservation as well. So I'm gonna move on. We talked, as a segue, of tiers. So for our single-family resident with a 5/8-inch meter, their first tier allocation or allotment is six units of water. So their first six units, fill up six of those little boxes, is at tier one. And 35% of our customer bills only go into tier one. They never are charged tier two or tier three water.
Yes.
And I just, I'm grateful that we have this. So for those that don't know, the Water District is represented by a five-member board, but we're broken up into five different divisions. My particular division where, where I represent is, includes Lake San Marcos and some very sizable mobile home parks. And so what I hear when I'm out in the community a lot from, from my constituents is that they're either widowed and, and they're living by themselves because their families have moved on and went on with life, or it's just the husband and wife living together, that the kids aren't, they only come to visit. And so they're grateful that we have the tier one and that we don't have like this blended rate that they, you know, that, that they're being, they're having to pay for because they're, they're just using just so little water. So I'm glad that we have that.
So our next allocation or allotment is tier two water. And for this 5/8-inch meter, that's unit 7321. So that's an addition, that's 15 additional units from tier one. So 55 additional percent of our customers fall into the tier two. So what that means is that 90% of our customer bills only go into tier one, tier two. So the remaining 10% of our customers do hit tier three.
Director Sinella.
Just to kind of put a little bit of clarity around tier three and, and how much water that really is, what are your typical tier three water users? Are they agricultural water users? Are they folks who have very large pools? What, what are we looking at?
It'd be probably a lot of irrigation, agricultural...
Maybe breweries?
Potentially breweries, maybe like laundromats, things like that.
Okay. Not a whole lot of just, you know, family of three or four.
Right. And we'll, the next slide will actually go into your typical family.
Okay, thank you.
So that is the tier allocation. So what is the typical usage? So of those 204,000 lines of data that I have, the, I looked at every month and the lowest usage month was, I believe, February of 2019. And our typical single-family residents use about seven units of water. So you can see that the majority of the water in the low usage month is tier one water. They've used one unit of water in tier two. So then I looked at, okay, well what is about our biggest demand month or August, which was August of 2019, when people are filling their pools, when people are taking extra showers, when they're watering their landscape. Well, even in the hottest summer month of last year, the typical family, uh, single-family residents use 15 units of water. So a customer would have to use 50% more than our average usage to get into tier three. So we have the seven units, we have the 15 units. What I want to talk about is, okay, so how does that compare to other agencies? And I wanted to say that when we use comparison to other agencies, most agencies use 13 units as a typical single-family residence. So that's just to compare apples to apples. So if we're comparing ourselves to Escondido or VID Vista, we use the same amount of water, 13 units.
Just a point of clarification, is the comparison that you're about to show us on current rates or on the future rates that you're proposing and you're, and you're trying to convince us to pass?
Everything in here will be proposed rates.
Okay.
So what I'm gonna do now, the next slide, is just gonna show what the impact is on our single, average single-family residents who would use 13 units of water. So this is our current bill for someone who is a 5/8-inch, single-family resident using 13 units of water. Their commodity charge is $54. Their ready-to-serve charge, the fixed portion is $35, for a total bill of about $89. That's our current rates as of today. The proposed increase rates would be about $92.42. Actually, it would be exactly $92.42 if they use 13 units of water. So the change in that is $2.94 a month. So our average single-family residents would see an increase of about $2.94 a month, which equates to about a 3.3% increase. And as Finance Manager Wes Owen mentioned, our supply costs from the Water Authority went up 4.3%. So we seen...
So how, how did we not have to raise our rates to 4%?
A lot of our...
What, what, what happened?
Some of our other costs that we've controlled really well and management and the board have done a great job of keeping our other controllable costs controllable. So we see the increase to 92.42. So where does that put us within, I have a, within the San Diego region, I have a chart showing 22 agencies. And it's a really busy chart, so let me explain it a little bit first. So these are 22 agencies within the San Diego County. And on the left will show the agency names and on the bottom show the, the cost. So what this is doing is comparing all of the agencies if everyone were to use 13 units with a 5/8-inch meter. So the average of all the agencies is the red line. It's about $100 per month. Vallecitos with the proposed changes would be at $92.42. So we are seven, would be $7.65 below the average of the 22 agencies. We're about 7.6% below the agencies.
Yes, Mr. Sinella.
Where's Padre Dam? I mean, I know where they, I know where they are on your chart, but like geographically, I, I'm not familiar with a city called Padre Dam.
I will refer to...
Yeah, it's, it's in the east county.
Okay. I'm glad I don't live there.
Director Martin, uh, yeah, Director Martin.
Yeah, I just have one thing. The green line we're using is that our, that's our proposed rates.
Correct.
Now, we don't know the other agencies when they're gonna propose their new rates or not, because 218 processes happen different times by different organizations.
Right.
So we're using their current rates and we're using our proposed rates.
For some of the agencies, if I knew they had a Prop 218 out there or knew that they were like, I forgot which agency, also has rates that are going to affect March 1st. If they were published, I use their rates. But there could be other agencies that go out to a Prop 218 in July that we would not have them included. But as, as much as I could, I use the most current that is on their website rates.
And, and just for the pure commodity, doing my slight math, that one unit of water that we have back there symbolized by the pipes, thank goodness one of our staff people did that, we sell that for $4.
For the first unit of water, it will be $3.77, I believe?
Okay.
$3.77 for the first unit.
Okay. So that's all of that water that we sell it for?
Yes. So that's about a half cent per gallon, about point, yeah, about a half cent a gallon.
Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation. So if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Director Hernandez.
I did, I think I saw in one of your earlier slides, the question came up in public testimony that the ready-to-serve for both 5/8ths and 3/4ths was the 36.50 or 35.55? Did I see that correctly?
That is correct.
So there is no differential between the two?
That is correct.
Thank you very much. I'm glad I clarified that for the audience.
Yes, Director Elathar.
Yeah, I wonder if we can clarify why we have 5/8-inch meters and 3/4-inch meters for the audience. I think that's important.
Yeah, so the 5/8-inch used to be kind of the industry standard and then as fire flow requirements came on, the people needed more flow to their properties. The new industry standard is more of a 3/4-inch meter. So we're transitioning to a 3/4-inch meter. All new meters that go in are 3/4-inch. We don't put in 5/8-inch. If we have to replace an old 5/8-inch meter, it gets replaced with a 3/4. So ultimately, we'll end up with nothing smaller than a 3/4-inch meter.
Madam President?
Oh, sorry.
And that's a requirement from the city based on the new policy, well, relatively new, policy of sprinklers in the home as being mandatory.
That's one driver, yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify, even if that wasn't a requirement, we would still be transitioning to 3/4-inch meters.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I think the industry as a whole is transitioning away from 5/8-inch meters. It'd be harder and harder to get them as time goes on.
Thank you.
All right. No more questions?
Yes. That's, that's the end of staff's presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions. And I know pretty soon we're gonna open it up for the public to make comments and we're happy to respond to any questions that the board would like us to address that the public may raise.
Okay. So I'm going to start calling a list. We have quite a few. And the first one I have in is for Tom Scaglione.
Tom Scaglione, 790 Rose Ranch Road, San Marcos. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to present comment. I presented at the February 3 Republican Women of California luncheon on San Marcos water rates and politics. Mr. Sinella was in attendance. After my presentation, as a courtesy, I passed the mic to Mr. Sinella, who while pointing to me, told the audience that I receive 100,000 per year pension for life, even though I only worked at Vallecitos for 15 years, and that all of you, pointing to the crowd, are paying 100% of it. All those statements are false. He also said that because he or this board took benefits away, employees are saying bad things about the district. Again, false. Mr. Sinella returned to our table and said to me, I will follow you wherever you go. And it wasn't out of extreme love or devotion, it was meant to intimidate. That comment was overheard and I received an apology from the leadership of RWC for that comment and for the personal attack. This is how this board is being represented. Intimidating anyone who speaks openly about ratepayers subsidizing development. Why is this board pitted against the FVC, the only agency that represents ratepayers? Isn't this board supposed to be representing ratepayers that elected you to office? Simply postponing these water rate increases until after the November election will not resolve anything. Address the underlying issue. Stop using our money to subsidize development. Stop using our money to subsidize development. Issue bonds. Bring back the cap fees you adopted and address all the errors and errant assumptions I pointed out in my protest letter. Adopt developer fees that are sufficient for developers to pay their impacts. Stop using ratepayer money like a piggy bank for the developers that bankrolled your campaigns. I have a copy of my comment and the protest letter for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next is Marjorie Dykema?
Dykema.
Dykema. I wondered which way it was going to go.
My name is Marjorie Dykema, and I'm actually from Santa Clara Hills. I'm representing Westridge HOA, one of the directors. I have some questions for the board. First of all, we have the highest accumulated ratepayer fund in San Diego County. We're looking at about $100 million. I oppose, and so does our board, as well as the Westridge homeowners, which I represent, we oppose the increase in rate pay and the water. Sorry, must be too close. Also, we seem to be the only fund that's in a deficit for the developers in the whole county of San Diego. This seems to be an incredible imbalance, as far as $100 million in accumulated ratepayer funds in our Vallecito Water District. There is no other water district in the San Diego County that even comes close to our accumulated funds. I'm looking, this is numbers that you provided from your office, the accumulated developer fund is in the millions and is the only deficit, again, in the county of San Diego. When you look at the total ratepayer reserves, and that was as of January 31, 2020, we're at 97.2 million. Again, that's your numbers provided. With these type of reserves, it doesn't make sense to have an increase in the water rates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you have the general manager respond to those numbers?
Yes, would you please? We're going to ask our general manager to respond to your numbers.
Yeah, I can't speak to some of the allegations that we're the highest in the county. We haven't done, we haven't looked and compared to every agency in the county in terms of the reserves. The numbers being cited appear to be incorrect as it relates to water funds. So we're here to talk about water rates, and the numbers being thrown out of 97.2 million, that may be true when you look at the water and wastewater combined. The water reserves are in the 33, 34.
As of fiscal year 20, they're projected to be 29 million.
So...
I'm sorry, you said there's 29 million in water?
So if you look at our approved fiscal year 2020 budget, the water reserves for replacement are 29 million.
Okay.
And out of curiosity, what are our sewer reserves?
They are 47.2 million.
So even adding them together, we don't get $100 million?
No, you don't.
What am I missing? What reports are we giving out?
That would be 76 million.
What reports are we giving out that this constituent could possibly be getting these numbers from, of $100 million?
I'm not sure where the numbers come from.
Well, it may be the difference in the designated and non-designated reserves.
Well, that's the total of the replacement reserves for fiscal year 2020. So they didn't specify which reserves, like, how they got their total reserve number. So without that, it'd be hard to pinpoint it. They may be looking at the five-year projection. At the end of five years, I can tell you what the reserve balances would be.
Could I ask the young lady that spoke, could you tell us where you got those numbers?
Mrs. Dykema?
Yeah, you said you got them from our...
Wait, would you ask, I'd like to come to the mic. One second. We just have a question for you.
The numbers I received, I contacted your office and requested the most recent data available, and this is where the information came from.
And what was your actual question, that you asked a question? What did you ask for to get the answer you got? Did you just say what?
I asked for the paperwork that provided the numbers.
For paperwork?
And the numbers were, for instance, we're looking at the accumulated ratepayer fund, okay? That's the number that I have here in front of me, which at that time was $96.3 million. Okay, that's Vallecito Water District. And then, looking at the accumulated developer fund, we're looking, at the time the numbers were provided me, at 14.6 million.
Okay, thank you.
So does that answer? And then, the information that I gave you today in regard to the total ratepayer reserves, this was January 31, 2020, 97.2 million total ratepayer reserves. That was from your office.
Okay. We're just trying to find out where, so we can...
And again, you know, based on policy, that's where we're at today.
Let me continue. What, where did she get those numbers from? She has them.
So I'm guessing, no, that she's citing the most recent reserve report, which would go to the board on a monthly basis. However, when we look at our budget, we forecast going forward, and we're forecasting that number to be decreasing based on the cost of replacing existing infrastructure. So it's already, balances projected at 2019 were around $90 million at the end of fiscal year 2019. It's now February, and we're projecting at the end of this fiscal year, we'll be much lower. And I'd have to look at the current reserve report, but I think we're much lower right now.
Okay, so if I were to ask right now what amount is in the reserves, it would be closer to her answer. But by the end of the year, what is in being said is that we have replacement work to do, and the reserves will go down because of that.
We do. And if you'd like the actual number as of January 31st, I can give that to you, if you give me a minute. Sure?
Sure.
I mean, but we can carry on, too.
Sure. Did you have anything else to add to that?
No.
All right. Should he go to the next?
I just want to be respectful of everybody's time.
I do, too. So we'll move on?
Sure.
And we'll come back to that. It's Mike Hunsaker.
Can I just ask if you're going in order of when they were turned in?
Well, I put them one after the other, but once they're up here, you know, she brings me some, and I just tuck them in, so I'm sorry.
Was it meant to be?
It was random. Okay. Mike Hunsaker, again. There is a capacity fee inherent in the rate to serve, and it should be proportional to actual usage. We have most of our single-family dwellings, our townhouses, and probably our condominiums going for a rate increase. Yet magically, multifamily dwellings went from $11 apartment to 10. There is an offset from the basic fee for the meter, which is typically, let's say, in the Villa Villages, it was mostly 2-inch meters, which is about $220 under the current situation. But they have almost 42 apartments per meter. Well, if you take the $10 and the $220 for the basic meter, that's about $520. No, it's $860, a little more than that. But you're charging $520. It doesn't make sense. Why are apartments, which your figures show use 7/10ths of what a single-family residence uses? And why is that going down? Now, as to the construction fees, if anything, that is understated here. Single-family dwellings, roads have been targeted politically, and they have gone up dramatically. Schools, for example, are going up 1.5% per month right now. The justification is that during summer is when they do most of the construction, so there's not too many people with construction capabilities. That isn't your case. But nonetheless, we're going to see 1.5%. And this has been starting since 2014. So why is it not coming up now? I do have a question, and that is, what do you do for a master meter for a mobile home park? How do you charge it? We're coming up with the need to do restrictions on residential uses of water. How are you going to meet that? Thank you.
Thank you. Any responses from my staff?
Nothing in particular?
No. Okay, you had a response for the prior.
For the previous question, yes. So looking at the January 31, 2020 reserve report, which went to the board last board meeting, the reserve balance is $97.2 million. The majority of that is $59.6 million, which is in sewer, and that's not being discussed tonight. And it's also worth noting that both of those balances are below our reserve ceiling. And we have approximately $4 million more of just water replacement projects budgeted for this fiscal year, so they will go down.
Okay, thank you. The next one is Tim Schell.
My name is Tim Schell. I live at 1721 El Rosal Place in Escondido, Vallecitos' customer in District 1, former board member. And when I was, back when I was a board member, I campaigned against the subsidies of developer fees that I was afraid would happen if I was not, no longer on the board. That appears to be what happened. That's why I'm opposed to the rate increases, because I am opposed to ratepayer money being used to support development, developers that have paid for campaigns. And I, based on what the presentation was tonight, I agree with a reserve policy that's prudent. I support having rates pay for the commodities that's being used. But of course, with the magic of accounting, it's amazing how they, the dollars, the reserves that were up near, very near the high ceiling we have magically dropped down. So I'm not sure how that happened exactly, but I am opposed to the rate increases, and I don't think we need to raise them as high as you're showing. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzie Glass.
My name's Suzie Glass, and I live at 1164 Sunrise Way in San Marcos. To begin with, I just want, I felt we kind of denigrated the form letters, the 57 letters, and you said 48 were form letters. I'm a busy lady. I was thrilled that there was a form letter I could sign, but that didn't mean that my heart wasn't behind that letter just as much as the others. And I think if more information had been sent out to the people in this district, you would have gotten a lot more than 57. But I just barely found out about this rate hike, and maybe I should be a better citizen. But I think if more people knew what was going on, you would have gotten your 1,100 letters or 11,000, whatever you needed. I just want to say, number one, that I'm a retired teacher. My husband is a non-pensioned retired salesman, and my yearly water bill is more than I make in a month. And so I've been very fortunate with our homes. We moved here in the '70s, so we've been able to build our houses up. I have a three-bedroom house, and I thought I lived in Lake San Marcos, but it turns out my back fence is the border to Lake San Marcos. I have a big vegetable garden. I grow my own vegetables, and I have eight fruit trees. And I am in the third tier. I am not a brewery. Yes, I have a pool, and I keep it covered all the time so that it doesn't evaporate. I'm not a brewery, and I yell at anybody that lets the shower run longer than they have to. So to, I'll tell you right now, there are a lot more people like me in little, you know, in three-bedroom homes in Lake San Marcos that are in tier-three than you think. I don't have a AAA double-plus rating on my budget. And after the last three days, I have much less income than I did before. But I will tell you this, I can't afford any more rate increases. I won't be able to live in Lake San Marcos. Maybe I won't even be able to live in California. But I think Vallecito's Water District can deal with less money a lot more than my senior citizen friends, and I can't. And maybe a little bit doesn't matter to you, but a little bit matters to me. It means that I buy less groceries, or I buy less this, or I buy less that. So I'm just begging you, and by the way, Mike, the state, I was a teacher, you only get money to build classrooms for the number of kids you have now, not for anything in the future. And I think maybe that's a good lesson for the Vallecito's Water Board, too.
Director Hernandez.
I do understand what you're saying, because I do have a three-bedroom house, and I have trees and everything, and occasionally I sneak into tier-three. How many units a month average do you use?
I don't know the units, but my bill averages $280 a month.
Yep, you're well above the 15, 16 for sure.
But I'm not the only one. I talked to my neighbors, and a lot of them are paying that much. I don't know, I was shocked at the 10%, and I know we're paying a lot more.
Yeah, I'm using 170 a month. So it's right in the right range.
But I'm tier-three every month, even in the winter.
Some of your bill is in tier-three. You go through one, two, and three.
Right, right.
All right.
But you don't get much for that tier-one, I guarantee it.
Okay, wait. Excuse me. At General...
Yeah, I would just add, that seems odd, based on what I'm hearing from the speaker, the size of the home and the type of landscaping, it seems very high. We do free residential water use audits, so if anybody wants to have district staff come out and make sure that water's being used efficiently, we don't have any leaks or anything, we're happy to do that, because it seems, based on the numbers she's throwing out, that there's something unique to her property.
And just to give you, they have come out to my home and, over the years, and I've changed my watering system, and it's gotten down below the 200. But still, as I said, it's $170, and that's what it is.
If I could add a shameless plug for a pilot project we're demonstrating, if somebody has a metallic meter, we have a device called a flume meter. It's a device you attach to your meter. It'll give you real-time usage. You can set up leak alerts, water budgets. We're offering them free of charge to the first, I think, 25 customers, and if anybody wants to take us up on it, then we'll make sure that they're compatible with the technology.
Okay. And Director Sennell.
And Suzie, good seeing you again. My wife's an assistant principal in San Marcos Unified, so I understand what you were saying. What I was referring to is developers also pay fees to the school district based on the number of homes that they're building, and that money is utilized to kind of plan for future needs for the district, so, but I totally hear you.
And Marcia Brooke.
I lived here in Lake San Marcos for 15 years, and I live on a fixed low income, so every little penny counts. In this last year particularly, I've become very anxious because of Vallecito Water. By the way, I just want to, I don't want to forget to respond to this opportunity to have somebody come out to the house and assess. I called to say, hey, how come my bill's $120 for this month? I am a single person living in the home. I do my laundry once a week. I'm very careful about my water usage, and when I look at my bill, it's all the fees. It isn't water. It is not the amount of water I use. It's all your fees. So I called, I was angry. I wanted them to come out and take a look. Oh, you must have a leak, you must have, it's not up to us to come out. You have to look at it yourself. I had a fight. I said, I've been paying all these fees, and you people can't come out to take a look at that meter and show me what's going on? Well, after the argument, at the end of the conversation... Well, after the argument, at the end of the conversation, they brought somebody out. It took two days, three days, but somebody came out, and we dug in and took a look at the meter. I looked at the online where you say you have transparency, that your expenses are transparent, and I noticed thousands of dollars are spent on something called personal improvement. What the heck is that? Personal improvement? Why am I paying for personal improvement? I want to know what it is. Needless to say, I'm really angry. How is personal improvement part of your operating costs? And who is benefiting from that, please? My kids live in Solana Beach. I took a look at their bill for the same amount of time. There are four people in the house. The kids are, you know, active and go to sports. They come home, there's lots and lots of showers. Their bill was $158 as compared to my 120. Vallesito water is draining us. I went to my homeowners association, and I want to tell you that of all the people there, everyone said the same thing. We're about 125, is it? I'm not exactly sure. I'm in the fairways. Everybody was complaining. Enough is enough. We do not need rates heightened.
Thank you. Did you want to?
I was just going to say, I've heard this, this is what I was talking about earlier. I've heard this over and over again, the exact same speech almost many, many times. They're not fees, and maybe you can clarify that, they're fixed costs, but nevertheless, there's a cost, there's a significant portion of our bill that's fixed.
Sure, there's typically three items on a bill. Remember, beginning, I mentioned that we provide water and wastewater services. The vast majority of our customers receive both services from us. So oftentimes, people compare their entire Vallesitos bill with their water bill only from another agency. I don't know the issue in Solana Beach. I don't know if that's just a water-only bill, or if it includes their wastewater bill only. On a Vallesitos bill, you typically see three charges. There's a sewer fixed charge, which is just a flat rate for a single-family home, it's about $39. And then you get a water fixed, a fixed water portion, the ready-to-serve that Mike talked about. And then you get a commodity charge, which is based on how much water is actually going through the meter. We don't have any other fees. It's not like if you look at your cable bill or your phone bill, that there's all these associated fees. It's basically three items that you'll see on there.
Could you clarify the difference between, what are the fixed charges for the infrastructure to get the water from, basically, from the point that it enters our district to the faucet, right? So can you talk a little bit about that and how that's different than the commodity itself?
Yeah, so the fixed charge, if we just stick with the water conversation, the fixed charge is to make sure that the system is in good operating order, so that when people want water, it can be delivered, regardless of how much water they want there. So the pipes need to be working, the pumps, stations need to be kept in proper working order. The amount of water that they take through the system, that's the commodity charge, and that's where the people have the most ability to directly affect their bill by using less water. Mike went to great pains to talk about the tier rates and how much people use, and the average customers aren't getting into those high tier-three rates. Anybody that's in a small home like that, that's routinely using tier-three, getting into tier-three, there's something wrong with the system, and we're happy to help them with those. And I apologize for the experience that Mrs. Brooke had with that, but if she'd give me her information, I'd be happy to talk with her.
Yeah, and I'm not going to, you know, get angry about it right here, but I was disappointed to hear that as well, because when I go out and about, and I tell people the same thing, anytime there's an issue, hey, just give us a call, and we'll send somebody right out. And this is the first I heard of a negative experience, but that's certainly unacceptable. That was her experience. The other thing, I thought you brought up a valid question. Tell us about this personal improvement. What is that?
I'm going to admit, I don't know exactly what it is. I don't know where she saw that. I'm not saying it doesn't exist. I don't know what the specific line item is, or what it's for, how much it is.
Could it be like professional development, or sending employees to training?
It certainly could. I mean, we always like to keep our people in the front of their career, to make sure they have adequate training to handle the changing regulations and things like that. It's probably related to something like that. I don't want to guess, though, so again, I'd be happy to meet with her.
Yeah, can you definitely get back to us on that?
Absolutely, yeah.
I'll get a question.
Yes.
Is that something Wes, personnel development?
So, I don't really want to guess either, but more than likely, if you want to...
You turned it off.
I'll turn it off.
More than likely, it's related to our self-improvement program. That program is for education of staff to promote their development and help them perform better, and it's limited. We have a limited budget, and it has to be budgeted for. So if people want to go to college, take courses in their profession here at the district, we actually offer $2,500 per person, per year. It's limited to that amount, and it has to be approved by the supervisor.
Also, as they get more licenses and they move up in steps that are required for us to have?
We do pay for their certifications. We do pay for their certifications to maintain those certifications so that they can perform their jobs, yes.
Right, and without the certifications...
Correct.
They can't perform their job, we don't have a district any longer.
Right.
And the other thing is, I've recommended 10 or 15 people call to have an audit done, and all of them have gotten back to me, said they had a great time. So I don't know why she had a difficult time. I don't know who she talked to or why, but I've known a number of people that get audits, and I recommend to everyone, if you think you're getting an audit, because there are leaks out in your systems that do happen and can be fixed, and our guys will point it out to you. And it costs nothing.
But one bad experience is one too many?
I agree. I agree. I feel bad for her bad experience, but that shouldn't be the norm.
And Director Hernandez.
And Wes, can you tell me how many people are taking advantage of the improvement?
I don't know that off the top of my head, unfortunately.
Can you find that out?
Absolutely.
We've got 100 employees, it could be $100,000 based on what was said. I'm sure that's not the case, but it would be nice to know so that we, so that the ratepayers understand that we're not spending $100,000 a year for staff's college courses.
I'm happy to provide that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Well, this one, I'm sorry, it's very difficult to read the name. It looks like it might be Troy. They live at 1437, and I'm sorry, I can't...
Right, of course.
Oh, thank you so much.
And it's Jim.
It's Jim?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
I have an unfortunate...
Well, not a problem. I just wasn't even going to guess at that.
The reason I came, and it kind of goes back to something that we talked about, and I was here two years ago. First and foremost, I know you guys get, and this is probably what this forum's for, a lot of negatives. I do want to thank you, as somebody who's been here only about four years, in terms of your stewardship for us, because I know water is very difficult in this state. But one of the things I did ask, and I never got a response to, and I saw this happen, and that was if and when there is a request for a rate increase, rather than it just coming out in the way of an announcement, if there is an interest by the board or by the district to get feedback from the customers, that they would include just a second page that said, "I do not," or "I do approve," and then we would mail it in ourselves. We would pay for the cost. But just to add one more page, so we wouldn't have to make production, or I wouldn't have to hand-deliver one to the front door, I think that's just the basic. The second thing I was going to ask you is, and this is just ignorance on my part, is where and what will the impact of Measure B be to the district? And that is the development that's going to occur out around Valley Center. Is that outside of the district's purview, so we won't have to worry about any water implications? Or is that going to be part of the overarching?
Yes, I'm going to ask...
Yes, I know.
Well, it is yes and no, and it's actually, you're talking about Newland Sierra.
Yeah, so the Newland Sierra project is in the northern portions of our service area. We're well aware of the project. We've analyzed it, and we believe that when it becomes a real project, that there will be adequate water supplies. Any improvements in infrastructure that are required to serve that will be paid by the developer and will not be paid by any ratepayer through their ratepayer funds. It'll all be developer-funded.
And that's, but... It's currently not within Vallesitos District's...
It's within our sphere of influence. It hasn't been annexed into our service area yet. But part of that development would have to include annexation. And there'd be annexation fees, capital facility fees that are paid in addition to, and once the houses are built and occupied, then they would get customer bills, just like everybody else who's a customer.
Could you at least, somewhere in your minutes, put down the idea of putting a second page on the next time you put on a rate increase request?
Make note of that. Thank you. Robert, is it Robert Oles? Robert, is it a U or a V at this?
It's a U, Oles. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Robert Oles. I am a resident in the Altera Community in San Lejo Hills, 891 Tocana Drive. The reason for me to be up here is really to question something that happened at my residence recently, and she was talking about her higher rates and doesn't quite understand how high they are. A gentleman mentioned having a investigative team come down, whatever, you know, a team come in and take a look and see what the problem is. Well, I recently, my wife and I, since November of last year, our rates have been in the tier-three rate, and it's just two of us in our home. Couldn't figure out why, couldn't figure out why. Finally ended up digging up my landscape meter, then found that there was a crack in a pipe. Well, a day later, I looked at, when we had our plumber at the house, he was looking at the water pressure in my home. The water pressure in my home exceeded the standard, the industry standard. I think it's supposed to be in the 50s or 60s, somewhere in there. I think the pressure per the house, I'm not sure, the figure's on the top of my head, mine were in the hundreds. So we got it reduced. The Vallesitos came out and found out that the pressure regulator was bad going to my house. My concern is this, for the four or five months that we were paying in the tier-three rates, it appears to me that the overpressure going into my house might have caused my pipes to break in the ground, but there's no compensation towards me, or there's been no discussion saying, well, we probably caused this, or we could have caused this, how can we help you? None of that has been discussed with me, and that's something that concerns me. If I am one resident that's had this happen, I'm sure there's others. I'm sure, ma'am, there may be something in yours. I'm not, you know, it's something that I think the district needs to take a closer look at and have teams come out, if they see homes in a higher rate, have teams come out and take a look at it, or at least call and offer the service. It was not offered to me when we called and asked about our tiered rates. But that said, that's all I have.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I understand completely. I have probably been, water leaks and old pipes in a home that was built in 96 constantly over these 10, 15 years. But the pressure regulator, those are private. The district is not involved. We get to the meter, and then everything after the meter is the homeowner. So much like you found, I checked my pressure, my plumber checked my pressure regulator, it actually was under, but, and the cracks had nothing to do with pressure, it had to do with roots and such. But just for clarification, the pressure regulator is a private situation that is supposed to be checked by your plumber on a regular basis to see what's going on. So I know we would be glad to come out and take a look at that, we, the district, but just to give you a reference, everything beyond that meter is private.
May I respond to you, sir?
Surely, by all means.
Absolutely. I may have misspoke. I don't, I said pressure regulator, they replaced the meter.
Oh, that's certainly different, yeah. That's certainly different, and I'm there with you, too.
Thank you. I misspoke.
Yeah, not very good.
Director Sinala, did you just...
Yeah, it's interesting when you hear these stories, because at the end of the day, we're just your neighbors. We're not professional water board people. We all have day jobs, or we're retired, or whatever. And in my neighborhood, where we're situated, we're kind of at the bottom of the hill. So it's, my next-door neighbors, actually, pipes in their house actually broke. And so we understand, because their pressure regulator wasn't replaced at the time of the matter, and, but, and my sprinkler heads break, because that's on the outside of the pressure, it ruins up most of every weekend of mine. It's just because water flows downhill from our system by gravity, and because if you live on the top of the hill, we have to pay electricity to pump it to you. If you live on the bottom of the hill, it comes for free, but it comes fast. And I'm not, I don't know if this is helpful to you or not, but it's just, we feel your pain, because every weekend, I'm replacing sprinkler heads. So I get it.
I understand, sir. My break was before my irrigation line. It was actually from my main line to the house, that T-joint that separates going to the main line and the irrigation line.
Well, yes.
Just to respond to a few things. So you mentioned operating pressure. Our maximum standard is 175 PSI, and that's pretty high compared to the industry standards, but it's very, we have a lot of topography, like Director Sinala was mentioning. So the obligation on the builder is to be able to have their system beyond the meter withstand any pressures up to 175 PSI. If something happened with the meter, then that would be our responsibility. And I'm not aware of your claim in particular, but we do have a process that if a homeowner feels that the district's system caused the problems, you can submit a claim, and we will evaluate the claim. And if there was damage caused on the inside of the house because of our system overpressurization, that's a claim that we will review. Second, we do allow leak adjustments. So as Director Hernandez can well verify, if a property owner has a leak in their irrigation system or in their house, and it was due to a break that they didn't know about, we will make adjustments to a bill. It's a one-time-only adjustment, but it's not, and it may be only for a month or two, but what it does is it takes you, we won't charge you any tier-three usage because of a break. Now, we have to have proof that it was a break. We need an invoice from a plumber, or a receipt from a Home Depot that shows you bought these supplies, but we do make leak adjustments. And we do it quite often, quite honestly, and we're pretty liberal with that, because we realize that oftentimes, people don't know there's a break for a while, and they end up with $300, $400 bills when they're normally at 150. We don't do it all the time. You can't do it every year, every month, but we do make adjustments for that, and I think that's all I wanted to cover.
Yes, so, may I respond a little bit, real quick, please?
Yes, you may.
Understood, sir, and I appreciate that, but again, when we called and discussed it with Vallesitos, the representative on the phone didn't offer any of those to us. And so it was, you know, as a homeowner, I was flabbergasted, obviously.
Right. I would like to suggest for all of you, though, if you have the question, call. And if you unfortunately have a bad experience, you need to call someone here and speak to someone else so we know, because none of us on the board want, they're just, as Mike said, one bad experience is one too many. And I'm sorry we don't reach out to you, but you can reach out now, and if you would like to come and talk about a claim or any of that, our general manager is asking you to do that. You're welcome to do that.
And if I can add, most of the time when people call in, they go to our customer service group, and Wes oversees the customer service group, so he's hearing it directly, and I'm sure, and he and I will have a conversation about how we can better educate the public that calls in about what their options may be.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Madam Brown?
Yes.
And do we, on occasion, when we see a unique increase in water uses, do we not notify the customer that there could be something going on?
Yeah, thank you for that. We actually do a lot of bill surveillance. We'll look for things like zero bills, and we'll wonder, why is it, why is the meter reading zero? Maybe somebody's on vacation, maybe their meter's stuck. So we'll send people out there to verify whether we think it's a stuck meter, or if there's some anomalous, maybe the people are out of town. And on the high end, we do the same thing. We'll compare, and we'll look for usage that's significantly above what that property's average billing is. And what we do when we find that, we reach out to the property owner and say, hey, it looks like there's something going on. Now, oftentimes, people say, oh, it's summer, and the kids are back from college, and it's, we're using a lot more water than we were. And sometimes they're like, I have no idea why it's gone up. The good and the bad about automatic bill pay is that people don't often monitor what their water bill really is. It gets automatically paid. So I encourage everybody, whether you're on automatic bill pay or not, to take a look at your bill on a monthly basis and see if you're trending. On the water bill, and I'm sorry, we don't have a copy of it, but there's a little bar chart that shows 12 months of history for your address. chart that shows 12 months of history for your address that shows your usage. If you see some anomalous usage, you're down at three or four units, all of a sudden you're up at 15, 20 units, something's going on. The data's telling you something. Call in and we'll, we'll come out and help and we'll get better at responding more appropriately.
We'll get better. Yes, Director Martin?
I would just like to say, you know, maybe we need to spend a little more money on our, and I don't know this, but on our personnel training. I don't know, but I was brought up by Mr. Scaglioni. The five of us are your represented people that have been elected to serve you.
Yes, sir.
Not to serve staff. We're here to serve you. If you have a problem, I know almost, well, all of us, when we do our campaign literature, has our personal phone number on it. Everybody puts their cell number on it. Call us and say, hey, I got a problem, and you'll see the response you get. A number of people have done that with me and with the other board members, and we take care of it right away. So, if you do have a problem, and you shouldn't, but if you do have a problem, get ahold of us.
Thank you.
We're here for you. We're here for everybody here. We're your neighbors. We're not the bad guys. Neither is staff. For all this you see being produced tonight to show you exactly what happens, we spend numerous hours to do that, to get all that information so that we can keep the rates as low as possible. And as far as the young lady that brought up the form letters, I'm glad there's a form letter out there. What I don't like about the form letter, what I do like about a form letter is, hey, your rates are going up. If you don't want them to, complain. But to put lies on there, and that's what developer fees, you know, development fees, and I should have held off to the end, but I've been real quiet today, I'm not generally a quiet person, but I've been advised by our attorney that there's so many things I can't bring up. I can't bring up personnel problems from the past. I can't bring up personnel issues from the past. I can't bring up any of that legally, so I won't. But let me tell you, there are those. And I don't like lies being told about me, about this board. Remember something about developers. Developers are a pass-through organization. When you bought your home in San Leoh Hills, you didn't pay for all the infrastructure. The developer did, but he passed that on to you when you bought your home. I mean, it's not, a developer doesn't pay fees that come out of his pocket. He just, if it's $10,000, $20,000, $30,000, he just adds to the price of the house. Same with schools, same with city. All the fees go into you when you purchase your home. So, to say developers are making money, it's not the fact. It's not what they do, not what any of us do. I get a little upset when I see lies out there. There was a certain piece of paper that went out, had my picture on it, and showed a quote that I will swear to you I never made. But being public officials, we have very high bars to people that can defame you and get away with it. Because you're a public official, they can do that. We can't do it in reverse, unfortunately, to anybody that may be disgruntled or upset over a promotion they didn't get. We can't do that. So, let me tell you that now. I've represented our city and our constituency for over 20 years, here and on the city council, and I have never, ever given a deal or wanted a deal made. And San Leoh Hills is a prime example for you that live there. San Leoh Hills yelled and screamed at how much money they had to pay the city to build there, and they did, and they built a beautiful, sorry?
I'm just hoping you would wrap it up here.
Do I have a time limit?
No, I'm just asking you to think...
San Leoh's built a beautiful establishment out there, even paying the fees, but the people that move in there pay for those fees. The parks, the trails, all the water was all paid by developers, but you paid for it when you purchased your house. So, I sit here and I try to be very quiet, and I'll try and be very quiet for the rest of the night, but some of it upsets me. I'm glad you people showed up. Thank you very much for being here.
The form letter I signed said nothing except I'm against the rate fees, and that's all the form letters I ever saw.
Okay.
Nothing about you or anybody on the board that just said, please do not raise a rate.
Okay, you didn't get one of those. But thank you. I'm glad, I'm glad everybody comes. I wish the place was packed with people. I'd love to be able to tell them our side of the story. Thank you very much.
Thank you, really.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And please, I encourage you to work with our staff to get that resolved.
Well, I think you know, we had created, all of you, if you have questions, to come to staff. And as Director Martin said, you also have every right to look us up and call us, and we will do what we can as quickly as we can because we do represent you. And we don't offer the rate increases without a great deal of research and thought. It's not like we're making money off of any of it. The special districts do not make money. And as has been explained, it hasn't gone to the developers. But I would like to ask Laura Fertilla or Fertilla?
Fertilla.
Fertilla. I believe she's our last speaker, and thank you for waiting.
I live at 1441 Mistis Way. I'm also the president of the San Leoh Hills Association, so I'm on board. We have a couple of questions for you and some concerns that we would like to address to management and to the board. Is it okay that I speak on behalf of the community as well? I mean, we are water rate payers.
Yes.
The first question I have is, we have a concern about your tiered rate system, and we'd like to hear some justification of that system. I know you mentioned, someone mentioned that they talked to their neighbor or a person that had a two-person household, and they were so glad that they were in the bottom tier because they paid less money. However, they would have paid less money because they use less water. So, my question is, what is the justification of the tier itself?
Would you like to offer an answer?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of explanations. As we do in California want to discourage overconsumption, the state has mandated that. We have programs specifically geared at Vallesitos to help people do that, and the cost of those programs tends to be placed on the higher tiers. Most of it's placed in the tier three. So, they're out there trying, we developed this informational brochures and things, and the cost of that gets placed on tier three. Another reason, Vallesitos is unique amongst San Diego water agencies. It's us and Carlsbad are the only two agencies that actually purchase desalinated water directly. It's very expensive, but it's a local supply of drought-proof water. And most of that water is placed on the tier three, most of the cost of that water is placed in tier three. And the reason for that is because if people weren't consuming at the higher levels, we wouldn't have needed to go out and buy that more drought-proof supply. So, we committed to that and put the cost of that water in tier three. So, that's why you see our tier structure, current ones is like 366 for tier one, $3.66 for tier one, and it's four something for tier two, and then it goes up to about $8.90 for tier three. And that's because the D cell and the conservation programs are primarily in there. And I'll look to staff to see if there's any other reasons that they can add.
I'm actually going to ask our consultant about, for the max day, max hour is based on tiers as well.
Yes, that's correct.
So, as more people put on demand on the system, the bigger demands require us to oversight, build bigger pipes, bigger tanks, bigger storage. And as General Manager Prom said, with the D cell water, if it wasn't for those peak demands, we would not need to build as big of a tank, it's built as big of a pipeline. So, a lot of those costs because of the max, and I'm not an engineer, so, that's why I'm looking over, is the max peak hour and the max peak day are pushed onto the tiers two and tiers three.
Okay. So, those tiers are two separate tiering levels. So, one is usage and one is time of day, is what you're saying?
No, there's no difference. We don't have a time of day, time of year, it's just quantity.
Okay.
When we go out and the meter gets read, if it reads at 15 units, we take six of those units and charge tier one, and nine of those units are at tier two. If you have 30 units consumed, we do six, up to 22, I think it is, and then the rest is tier three. It doesn't matter, summer, winter, morning, evening. It's unlike other utilities like SDG&E, they have time of use. They have summer rates that are actually higher than winter rates. They have, you know, between four and nine is a peak time. Water rates aren't like that. No matter when you get the water, you're paying the same price per tier.
Okay. And then just a follow-up question to that. The desalinization, the water that you get from desalinization, do you do a standard amount every month? Or do you, you know, look at the previous month's usage and/or the previous year's usage? How do you come up with that amount of water?
So, we have a contractual relationship with the County Water Authority. San Diego County Water Authority actually buys all the water. They committed to Poseidon to purchase all the water. They made it available to other agencies. Vallesitos and Carlsbad took them up on the offer. So, we commit to 3,500 acre feet per year, and it comes in basically even monthly allotment. Sometimes it varies, but over the course of the year, we're going to get 3,500 acre feet of desalinated water. That's about 25% of our total annual demand.
Okay. So, let me see if I understand then. So, for instance, let's say we have two houses side by side, and we have the same size home with the same size meter, and we have one house that has two people occupying it, and then one house that has a family of five. The two person, the two people that live in one house may be able to stay in tier one because there's just two people. But if anybody has a family, then their possibility of going into tier two or tier three increases.
Right. I have a family of seven, and I rarely get into tier three.
Okay, all right. So, I think our concern is, is that you're not going by usage of per person, you're going by usage per meter. So, for instance, you're almost being penalized for having a family of five versus somebody like my husband and I, or a family of two. You know, we don't really get into those tier systems, although we do have a pool, so sometimes we'll creep into two.
So, really, we don't care how many people are in the household. We just care how much water goes through the meter. And it's, we find that the most fair way to allocate our costs because people with low consumption shouldn't be picking up a large percentage of the cost that's caused by people with large consumption. That's why there's a commodity portion and a fixed portion. So, the fixed portion, everybody pays whether you take a drop of water or not, that's to maintain the system. And the rest of the bill on the water side is the commodity, which is just how much money, I'm sorry, how much water goes through the meter regardless of how many people live in the home.
Okay. Have you considered possibly somehow incorporating how many people live in the home with the size of the meter in order to make it a little bit more fair to a, to a family of five or seven?
So, in a way, yes. Currently, we don't, but the state of California is pushing in a direction that we're going to have to come up with what's called a water budget. And when you do that, they're going to establish standards for the residency within a home, and you're going to be held for interior water use to a standard starting at 50 gallons per person per day. So, we're going to have to figure out how many people are in each household, multiply that by the then-current standard. It's starting at 50 gallons per capita per day, but it may drop below that. And that'll determine your interior water usage, and then there'll be an allocation for exterior water usage based on the size and how much property you have to irrigate and the type of crop. We're not there yet, but the state of California is pushing us that way. So, within the next couple of years, you'll certainly hear more conversation about the direction we're heading.
Okay. What, on the reserve study that you presented, I was a little confused about, were you basing that reserve study on current rates or were you basing that reserve study on the increased rates?
So, the reserve numbers presented were including the proposed rates.
Okay. I'd like to request a little bit more time. I have a lot of residents who have come to our board and expressed concern about the tiered rate rates. And we are actually currently investigating some lawsuits that have happened, some class actions, Plantier versus Ramona Municipal Water District. And I would really like to extend an olive branch and have a conversation first before anyone goes crazy with all of this. I mean, we, as a board in San Leoh Hills, it's on our agenda every time we meet, and we have several residents who are very concerned about this tiered rate.
We could give you more time, but it sounds...
Yeah, I just have a few more questions.
Okay, I was going to say, it sounds like it would really be beneficial if you connected with our staff and asked them to come out to your organization and do a presentation. I see your hand, hold on. That's my first response to you. I'm going to let Director Sennella point out, sure.
And I know we've said a lot tonight that, hey, talk to our staff, talk to our staff, but Director Martin has, probably represents the majority of San Leoh Hills. I have a little piece of San Leoh Hills in my division. I'm, I go to HOA meetings, I go to Juana meetings, I go to Lake San Marcos meetings. I'll talk to anybody that wants to talk to me. So, I would love to come to one of your meetings personally. I know Director Martin's the same way. We'll bring, we'll bring some folks that are, that, like I said earlier, we're not water board experts, but we'll bring some experts with us too to help us out. But we would love to come.
Yeah, and that was going to be my last request, is that someone come speak to the board. I can't make that official request. I'm going to let it be put up to vote, as you know.
Right.
You know, even though I'm the president, I don't get to make all the decisions. So, I will have them vote on it, which I imagine they're all going to vote to, to meet with management and possibly our representative and kind of understand where we're going. I'm really glad to hear that we're starting to, you know, maybe incorporate family size. That's a positive move, I think, for us. I just wanted to know, who is American Water Works? Because didn't someone say they recommended the tier system?
Yeah, so, American Water Works Association is a national organization that's developed standards around the water industry. And they, one of the products or services they offer is this M1 manual that talks about how, it gives guidance on how rates should be set.
Okay.
And you'll find that the vast majority of water agencies nationwide, and particularly in Southern California, have a tiered rate structure. Very few don't have tiered rates.
Okay, all right. That was for my, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Director Martin?
I just want to diddle what Mr. Sennella said. I have a big place in my heart for San Leoh. I was on the city council and approved San Leoh. And I've known many residents out there, and I've talked to many of them about water, but I'll show up anytime, anywhere that anybody wants me to and talk to them about water, bring staff with me, pass out my cards with my home number and my cell number, so if people have a problem, they can call me. That's what I'm here for.
Okay.
I'm here to represent the people and do what they want me to do.
Yeah, they're calling us. But I'm here to talk to you.
Sure, no, that's right.
And I appreciate your position because I'm in the same position. I'm on a board, and I'm separate from management, and, you know, I understand where you're all coming from, and I know that your heart's in the right place. So, but I just felt like we needed to reach out to you and talk to you about some of our concerns and maybe even hold a forum, you know?
That would be awesome.
President Evans?
Yes.
If I can add, if the board members that attend want staff to attend, we can ask Mike to slice and dice the data just for San Leoh Hills. He's given kind of overall averages for our service area, but if we wanted to break it down on a more granular basis, so you can see how does San Leoh consumption compare to other areas, it may or may not be useful to you, but we can do that type of analysis if it's helpful.
Good, that'd be great.
Laura, I suggest that you do go back to your board, discuss what you've heard and what's available to you, and see what they would like to do. I think there's a benefit very much from having to just deal with your own region. And while they're doing that and you're discussing it, I would also suggest that you look into the individual family counting because it's going to be a very expensive process when it comes because the government is then going to demand that we go out and monitor every unit on a yearly or twice a year basis. So, what do you do when you have babies or triplets or three people leave your family? How do you handle the water if you have events at your family? How do you count a big dog versus a little dog? What if you have a goat and a cow? It's a really interesting sounding mandate when you're thinking, it'll be really great, but it won't be cheap. And the point of it is that it will be turning all of us into little numbers, and then we can try to figure out what we're doing from day to day. As a water district, it makes it almost impossible for us to know if we have to come over and say, I understand you had a party of 30 people, of the 30 people last night. And you say, well, my, your water bill's going to go up. Because it's not, it's not in there, not with the low they're doing.
We're not really talking about a one-time party. We're talking about somebody who has five children who are going to be there for 15 years.
No, no, I understand what you're saying about having five children. But it's, I come from a family of seven. And it was definitely more expensive for us to go to the grocery store than my neighbor, even though we both paid the same price for the milk. I understand that. I'm just seeing, it sounds good until you understand the dynamics. So that's something you might want to look into, just as a group.
Well, we'll definitely have that conversation when you come out.
Okay.
And, and, and address that. I also just wanted to let you all know what's going on in San Leoh Hills. We are currently replacing our irrigation system throughout San Leoh Hills with a more efficient irrigation system. We're changing out our controllers so that we can monitor any kind of leaks that we have. There, sometimes they're very hard to identify, so we've had very high, high water bills that we're hoping to control. And we're hoping that your rebates continue. So I wanted to also mention that, because we're really trying hard and spending a lot of money on that.
Yeah. I want to add something. A little off the subject, but it's not. The city of San Marcos is doing its new general plan, and they have a put-together committee. And if you can read your monthly newsletter that comes out from the city, they're going to be having one on your site out in San Leoh, March, the first or second week of March. But if you go to the city's website, or look at the mail they send you all the time telling you about it, the more people that show up at this, the better. Because any general plan amendments, that's where you get all the input. And what I'd like to say about water is, is here's, here's, here's the problem that I've heard from HOAs over the years. And like yourself, I was the president when I got involved many years ago in a very small HOA here in, in the city. And here's the problem. The problem is you pay the water bill. And the problem is your landscaper is told, keep my place green. And they turn the water on. And a lot of times, there's a miscommunication between their job, because they see your unit is needing a lot more water. But I'm just telling you that that's kind of the problem. And the people that the city hire and HOAs hire, the over-governing, they're there to keep you green. So they don't always pay attention to what your water bills are. But just an observation.
Well, we've hired experts to help us plant and improve with water-saving plants. Nothing that we plant in San Leoh Hills will be of high water usage. We are very dedicated to decreasing our water usage there, and also to encourage our residents to decrease their water usage.
Great.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
More than happy to help with that too, because we've had some success stories with Emerald Heights, which is the neighborhood that's right on the border of San Marcos and Escondido and up on top of a hill, kind of like San Leoh. And they've, they've recently won awards for some of their landscape changes. And so we, and they came to us for some advice on that too. So we'd be more than happy to help.
Okay, great. All right. And who do I contact for the, you, do you have a card?
I have it here.
Do you have a card with me?
Okay, you have my information.
Okay, we have yours.
Is there contact number on there?
Yes, my contact number's on there.
Okay, I'll reach out to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, all of you, for coming and sitting through this and for sharing your thoughts and your concerns. We really do appreciate each and every one of you being here. At this point, there are no other people wishing to address the board, so the hearing is closed. I'd like to ask my board members if any of them have any further questions, discussions, or comments. Well, I'll just start on the end with Director Hernandez.
Yes, either staff or manager, I've heard at least twice, I think maybe three times, about this subsidy for builders, which I know is not true. But could you clarify that specifically? We have been told, I know, I've built things in this community for 45 years. I've paid for every portion of development that I have been involved with.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say it as simply as I can. Ratepayer funds do not help subsidize development in the Vaisido service area. It's that simple.
Then where are they getting this, this, we're subsidizing developers?
My guess is that there is currently a deficit in the developer fund. When we approved the new development impact fees, the capital facility fee, we took that into account. So the new fees that are being charged to developers are going to erase that deficit. Having said that, Mr. Scaglione referenced, maybe we should go issue debt. Issuing debt, even if we issued enough debt to have zero deficit, it would have zero impact on what's being presented to the board today. It wouldn't change the amount of money that we need to operate the, the water fund. So it's irrelevant, it's, it's a bit of a red herring. And just because you take on, if you borrow money to take care of a certain debt, it doesn't fix another problem. The, what fixed the problem was the new fees that this board set that were effective on January 2nd. It's going to take time for those new fees that come in to address that deficit. But in the meantime, we are not subsidizing or paying off that deficit using ratepayer funds.
And we have never.
And we have never.
Thank you very much.
Director Sannella, do you have any further comments or questions?
Yeah, just, you know, these, these are always tough conversations to have. And I think, I've been on the board for, since 2014, so not too long, but I think this is the second or third time I've had to go through this. I did, in preparation for tonight's meeting, because I, I'm pretty fiscally conservative. I know Suzie knows me, and a few people out there know kind of my background. I, I don't like taxes. I don't like rate increases. I don't like fee increases. So it's always uncomfortable when we have to go through this for me. But I did ask staff in preparation for this meeting to give me, like, basically the last 20 years' worth of rate increases. And all of us are relatively new, I think. What year did you come on, Jim, 2010?
Yeah.
Jim's got the most tenure on the board, coming on, on board in 2010. So, and I think one of the board member prior, I think the person that you replaced spoke tonight, and, and I don't know if he's still here, but I'd be kind of curious, because I went back to 2009. I'm not going to bore you with 20 years' worth of data. But in 2009, the year before you came on the board and long before, anybody was here, even Glenn wasn't here, Tom was here, Tom Scaglione was here. The rate increase at that time was 23.4%. We're talking about a three and a half, 3.3% increase tonight. We really work really hard to try to keep these rates as low as possible. I don't know what happened in 2009 that required them to raise the rates 23.4%. I don't know, you know, we've been accused of subsidizing developers. Well, who were they subsidizing at 23.4% in 2009? None of us know the answer to that, because none of us were here. The only people that were here were the one, the one director that spoke, and then our, the chief financial officer, who recommended that increase, who happens to be in the audience. But, you know, just know that we're your neighbors. Whatever, if, if there is an increase that, that's passed tonight, it passed on to us too. You know, we're not, we don't get free water. And, and just know it's a tough, it's a tough thing for us. I, like I said, I think I voted no in 2016 for a rate increase. And a couple of months later, there was newspaper articles saying that we weren't charging enough for the water. And they hammered us, and you can't win in this position. They hammer, if you do, if you don't, they, they're going to get you no matter what. And it's just unfortunate. But just, just know that, I encourage you guys to get more involved with us, and don't, don't wait for this once every couple of years where there might be an increase to discuss, to come and talk to us, let's keep the conversation going. And, and, and we'll see how the vote goes tonight, I guess.
Thank you. Director Ellatharp?
Yeah, thank you. I believe that this proposed water rate increase is prudent, reasonable, and necessary. If you just look at the costs passed down to us by the San Diego County Water Authority at 4.3% increase, and you take 70, that figure, the, the water we purchased from them is 73% of our budget. That requires a 3.1% increase on just that factor alone. Take, not taking into account any other cost increases that, that we have to take into account to operate this district. So I, I support the proposed rate increase and the ordinance to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Martin?
Yeah. I apologize for my outburst earlier, but I get very emotional about certain things. I enjoy representing our community in any capacity. And I really enjoy being on the water board and learning so much about it, which I didn't know. Turn the tap, water comes on, they're doing their job. Once you get involved and you start understanding everything that's involved, there's a lot to it. And the sewer, that's a whole other story, nobody wants to think about. Just do that, and it goes away. Developers, I don't know why, they're not the bad guy. They're building houses for population, and we have an extreme shortage. And now they're starting to build affordable housing where they can. And San Marcos has been the leader in affordable housing for many, many years. Anything that they're charged by anyone gets passed through to the buyer. I mean, it's not something comes out of their pocket. So we're not doing anybody any good if we're not charging them enough. Because eventually, everyone has to pay for it. And we're a nonprofit organization, we're owned by you. 25,000 people that pay their water bill, you people are the people that are owned by Vaisidos. We represent you. Staff works for the general manager, and he really is the only employee that we have. He runs the operation. And then we have everyone else that works for him. It's a fairly simple program that people don't understand, but I, I am concerned when things go out and people don't call me. And maybe it's my fault I haven't reached out enough. But if any of you here today want my card and want my telephone number, I'll gladly give it to you. You can call me anytime with a problem, and I will work very hard to fix it immediately. There's no reason why we can't fix most things immediately. So, and I'm sure every board member up here is willing to do the same thing. We're here for you, not for disgruntled employees, ex-employees. So thank you very much for coming tonight. Excellent to hear from you all. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, board. I would just like to say, we are here for you, and you do own us. And we've promised you, this is our mission, that we are going to deliver water to you 24/7, and we're going to take the wastewater away 24/7. And we are only going to ask you to provide enough money to pay for what we need to do that. And I think sometimes we forget, it's unfortunate that water usage can only reduce your bill to a certain amount. Because the water is only part of the expense of having water. It's 75% of our bill and cost to get that water to you. But we have hundreds of miles of pipes. And we have to build pipes big enough that if you want to have, every one of you in your neighborhood wants to have a big party for New Year's, that you can all expect that you can all, your water will be there, the toilet will flush, you can take a shower, your neighbor can have a pool party. You shouldn't have to think about it. That's what you pay for when you're ready to serve. That's why it's expensive. It's like cable. You pay for cable whether you turn on the TV or not. You can make it a little less by suggesting less shows. I'm only going to take this particular set. But there's a basic cost to it. And that is what is so hard for us, is the reserves are there so that if we have a major breakdown, we don't suddenly find ourselves in debt scrambling to go borrow money or raise the rates immediately on you to pay something. That's what the reserves are there for. They're sensible, and it's, we, we have to look at them on a daily, not a daily, but a yearly basis to, where is it going? The world is changing. The water world is changing, and prices are changing in lots of ways. We're all sort of in this together. And I, it's very difficult to raise rates. I'm one who gets in the third tier a lot. I'm in Division One, and I, we have two and a half acres. And I will say, I've gotten the call, and I am so grateful to have had the odd people come out. We did fix some of it. And just recently, we tried the flume, and we found we have a small leak in an irrigation line. It's not a lot. It's like one-seventh of a gallon a minute. But when you add that up, fills those things really fast. But that's what we're dealing with, is how do we get the water to you? And that's what a lot of this rate increase is about. And it's only about the water. We're not talking about the wastewater. I agree with all of our board members here, we haven't been subsidizing developers. And if we were, we certainly are not now and moving forward. So thank you very, very much for being here. And please, take them up on being involved. Thank you so much. Does any member of the board or directors wish to adopt the ordinance establishing rates, rules, and regulations for water service rate increase?
I'll move for approval.
A second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance establishing rates, rules, and regulations for water service rate increase. We will need a roll call vote for this, as it is an ordinance.
To the first.
Oh, which one?
You got it.
Oh, there it is.
I should have asked you, were you voting yes or no?
Oh, okay. All right. We have a unanimous vote. Votes are all in.
For a second.
Pardon?
This is an ordinance, so we need to, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, we're talking about the, the, nevermind.
No, good.
Okay.
Are we okay?
I believe we're good.
Yes, we are.
You voted, you voted to approve, unanimously voted to approve the ordinance.
Right. Okay. Now, am I moving on to 2.1, or did I just do it? I'm looking at my agenda.
Yeah, that was, we, we, we've just rolled right into 2.1.
Oh, well, I had a speaker. I apologize, Mr. Hansaker, would you like to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If you have a single-family residence and you buy it new, you are paying for all that new capacity. If you look at the rates of projections of water use, you'll see that just about every single home is paying its full share. My problem is with the multifamily, high-density rental units. And they consistently are far less. Now, there are offsets to those costs. For example, if you have a developed, a area which has developed, and it's got four homes, and you put 16 on it, then there's an offset for the value of the four. But you should still get the same number of meters to match the capacity of the water that is used. And that doesn't match up.
I'm sorry, could staff turn that podium around? Because he's not talking to us.
Now, as far as, I have one issue on rates and regulation I didn't see. And that is regarding ag, small agriculture. We have a large amount of small agricultural users, and lots of, substantial amount in the VWD. Now, the previous, at least as far as I know, possibly still in place policy was, if you had an ag land and a home on it, the first 26 units were charged to the home before the ag rate came to effect. So if the real average use is 15, shouldn't that be reflected in the ordinance? So our problem is not the single-family dwelling. And I've hit on the fact that the three-quarters and the five-eighths a couple of times. Well, if you have, paying for 750 gallons per day to meet the fire requirements, then the reservoirs, the pipelines, and the pumps all have to increase. But that isn't being done to manage and serve your average five-eighths unit user. The last issue I want to invoke is, what about leasing fees? How do they go up? Because we have some people who are going to use more water than they're subscribed. And then the leasing rate comes in. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, do you have comments?
I have a comment, but I also.
Is it agendized?
I just wanted to see, he's had some questions, so I wanted to see if we can, if we can have them answered.
Is this agendized?
It's, it's not agendized, but, but he did have a couple of questions. I think we should at least try to answer them. But I will say that I think he kind of made our case tonight. But one of the other challenges that we have is there's a, you know, there's a total cost of, of what it costs to run the district. So we get sometimes some ag users that come in, and they'll lobby us for a lower rate for, because they're using more water, they're using for agriculture. And then we'll have, like I mentioned earlier, the, the widow who is living by herself, and she'll, she'll advocate and lobby us for a lower rate. Anytime we, we mess with the numbers, and we, we give the farmer something, it comes at the cost to everybody else. If we give, so we have to always be very careful when we start talking about, who are we going to pick and choose to subsidize? we going to pick and choose to subsidize? But I don't know if you want to answer any of those questions.
I don't know that I heard a specific question, I heard some comments about things, but.
Okay, then maybe not, then, that's fine.
I have a question on the ag rate and whether or not the policy changed, and how much goes residential and the tag.
Director Ellatharp?
Yeah, there's a section 5.4 in the ordinance addresses special agricultural water rate.
So there hasn't been any change in the ordinance that relates to ag, and as Director Ellatharp mentioned, there is a provision in the ordinance that talks about the special agricultural water rate that we do have for agricultural, qualifying agricultural accounts.
And that's a program through the county water authority.
Right.
Right. All right. Now I've lost my place. Okay, I think that's the end of this, and we move on to meetings. Have any of you meetings to report?
Pass it back last night.
Huh? Not sent last night? Well, I actually will quickly tell you a very quick thing. At the Water Authority, there was a meeting today, and it was a very long session on the Metropolitan Water District litigation. And you've probably heard, there's been a little bit publicly about it, but the Water Authority has stepped forward and made a good offer in resolving some of the litigation. In fact, what they recommended was that we dismiss without prejudice claims related to payments of the water stewardship rate on supply purchases only, and the unquantified claims in the state cases relating to cost of service grounds and the rate model. So yes, we're still in litigation, but they're asking to dismiss a great portion of it. It will hopefully also decrease anticipated litigation time and costs, and they were very hopeful about it. It was a very long discussion, closed session with the board, but a very positive move, and I was very proud for us to try to end this and find a way to come together, because that's been a big burden for quite some time.
And just to clarify, it's all complicated. You're talking about litigation with the San Diego County Water Authority and their board, it's not, we're not being.
Oh, no, I thought.
I know that, but I want to make sure that our guests know that.
It's the San Diego County Water Authority, I'm sure you've heard the paper that they're in litigation, and have been for almost 10 years, maybe more, with the Metropolitan Water District. And that, of course, affects our rates, and the reason we went into the litigation is because we felt we were being unfairly charged. So I won't go into any of the details, it's late and we need to go, but I just wanted to, yes, did you want to say something, Glenn? I just wanted to say a little shout out that I thought that was good. And also, is there any, I've lost my agenda, what comes next?
I think adjourned.
Were adjourned?
Yep.
Were adjourned. Have a lovely night.
Thank you.